Experts, we do have a lot of experience and we're delighted this morning to be sharing that with the group. And thanks to SDP for the work in arranging this. Also, thanks to Sharon Waring, who's our Chief Officer Finance and Resources, who will take us through the second part of the presentation and that relates to all things financial. We, this is our first attempt at this webinar and we certainly hope it won't be the last. So we look forward to your involvement and also feedback in terms of any future events and content and how we can improve it. I have a number of slides to take you through. And as Fran has said, we will then, at the end of the presentations, undertake a question and answer. So we look forward to that too and please just jot questions down as you go. Finally, just for people who were involved in our Providers' Day yesterday, that took place in City Chambers. It's just to say that there might be some repetition from what you heard yesterday because Sharon again was one of the key speakers. However, I don't think it does any harm to hear messages twice. And perhaps that also gives you a better opportunity in terms of having reflected on what you heard yesterday to make really complicated questions. And so without further ado, I will move on just to set out what it is that we're going to cover today. And today Fran set the broad aims of the session. The agenda is shared up within the screen. There are a number of slides that will be shared with you. It wouldn't be helpful for anyone for me to take you through and read. So I will pick out key parts within them and certainly note any questions if you're looking for further clarification, et cetera. And we will just take it from here. And so we are committed to engaging, empowering and enabling the market. And I think you, who are familiar with the Glasgow approach, will be aware of that. We are on an improvement journey as an HSCP and as a commissioning section. And we rely on yourselves as partner providers to work with us. And that's where we're going to move forward from in today's another state in air critical journey. We all are facing a number of challenges that are going forward. And we seek to do that in a spirit of collaboration and also transformation. And that's what we work to do within it. Our ultimate aim is in terms of improved outcomes and experiences for the citizens of Glasgow and also to ensure that we are able to meet the key challenges of financial sustainability and also best value that's around. We are looking at process efficiencies, we're looking at efficiencies in all we do. But we also recognise that a key part is the customer relationship management and the approach that we follow within Glasgow, which sees us operate in a transparent and equitable manner. And it's what we will consider going forward. We are governed, as you are, by a number of strategic and legislative drivers. And the key for us is in terms of the IJIB strategic plan. It was refreshed last year. It's certainly a document for everyone involved in Glasgow worthwhile making yourself familiar with. There was a lot of work done in terms of engagement to ensure the content reflected where we were and what we're doing. Another key driver is in terms of Glasgow's sustainable procurement strategy. And some of this is new to ourselves as commissioners because a number of the initiatives and drivers that we are addressing today are relatively new in terms of social care commissioning in the world that's going. There are a number of different procurement routes and that depends on the spend, the type of contract and other extraneous factors that can vary from contract to contract. We do have a commitment to SMEs and to make sure that we make all opportunities as accessible as possible within it. We also really are looking to encourage collaboration between and across providers. And there is some good experience across the city and it's certainly something that we are keen on. And for every opportunity that comes out, we do welcome that approach. We also think that it fits with a number of principles that you yourselves have as social care providers. And I'm aware that there's significant support available to yourselves, both from CCPS and also from Scottish Care, which are two of the provider representative bodies to support providers nationally as well as within the city. The slides are being shared, so to repeat that, but this slide just gives a breakdown in terms of our purchase services, annual estimated spend for 24-25. We do speak about financial challenges, but I think you can also see very clearly from the slide that there's also a lot of money with which we can work. And that does provide opportunities within what it is that we are seeking to do in both as purchasers and providers of social care services. The slide in front of you just now includes also spend that's involved in national contracts. So for example, the National Care Home Contract, the Secure Care Framework. And these are in conjunction with Scotland Excel. Earlier in terms of effective collaboration with partner providers, organisations. And we are committed, we're very, very clear that we can improve greatly within this. And this is a further demonstration of what it is that we're doing. We recently produced a market facilitation plan that I will cover in a bit more detail. But it's just related to the state, the principal aims of what it is that we are working for as an HSCP and on behalf of Glasgow City Council, which is our contracting authority. We evaluate the input of partner providers and there is representation and ongoing engagement at all levels of strategic planning. That is very embedded across Glasgow HSCP and is something that is both welcomed by yourselves because of the benefits that it brings, but also I think by yourselves as providers and also for the users of our services. And I think it creates the principles of value, of worth and connectedness, all of which, when taken together, do result in improved and more person centred services. And the notices for any contracts that we are doing within Public Contracts Scotland, within local events, will always promote this partnership. And we seek to lead by example as we go forward within it. I mentioned within the previous slide, the market facilitation plan. So that was recently approved by our IJIB and has been published. And a link has been sent out to all our key stakeholders. Link's also available through our website and that's certainly something that we will add to this slide when they've been circulated by SDP following today's event. We developed this in collaboration with providers. And it is an iterative document and one that we would certainly seek to update on a regular basis. And I think as we become more familiar with it and as you yourselves become more familiar with it, there's certainly the opportunity to influence future content. It really states our approach to the key working practices round about ethical commissioning, sustainability, our corporate social responsibility, commitment to small and medium sized enterprises, SME that are referred to, supported business and critically are independent and third sector providers. It does recognise the budget constraints that I mentioned earlier, but also would remind you of the opportunities when you're dealing with such a high budget and the scale of which Glasgow operates within. We really as an HSCP and as a commissioning section are seeking to be at the cutting edge of social care provision. And we also will ensure in everything that we do, the principles of public procurement. And that's in respect of transparency, integrity, openness, fairness, non discrimination, equal treatment, competition and accountability. These underpin all of our practices within commissioning and procurement. And it doesn't mean that we get everything right all of the time. But we certainly are open to feedback on that transparency, learning and improvement. So we really hold ourselves to an approach of continuous improvement and learning. And we still have a long way to go, but I can also say that we have came a long way over the past few years. The next part, and this is already available through the IJIB website and other council websites, et cetera. And this is just a slide that is setting out our tender developments that are planned for 24-25. And we are doing a lot of work behind the scenes in terms of the processes that support these. So it's about the processes and the approaches with people. And that's recognising the relationship base of where it is that we come from. We're learning as a section and we're involved in various national groups that support the work that we do. So we have got places at key decisions. So that's in terms of the Ethical Commissioning Working Group that's led by the Scottish Government. Both Sharon and myself are also members of the Fair Work and Social Care Implementation Group. And really every opportunity we do seek to contribute to that agenda, but also to bring the learning back to Glasgow to make sure that we are improving everything that we do and that we are innovative in our practice and that we learn. The parts are going roundabout in the future is under engagement with the Supplier Development Programme, of which today is an example. But it's, we're also looking at refining our selection criteria that we use within air tenders and the air commissioning and procurement approaches. And there's work about that to make it proportionate, to make it relevant to the contracting opportunities that are around and to ensure that it works to the best that it can do. We're also exploring opportunities to see where we can use different approaches to procurement and social care. And that's in terms of considering the light touch regime, which is contradictory to what comes. I think, but it is about the flexibility. It doesn't mean that we are absolving any of our governance or our compliance arrangements, but it just is more responsive in a lot of ways to social care and the market and the types of service. And critically, it really encourages the use of user involvement at all stages of the design projects. And we do an awful lot of work in terms of consideration of lots and lotting strategies. And part of that is about ensuring that there is an equality of access and equality of opportunity for all sizes of providers and social care provision that's going around. We are increasing our engagement with providers. And we have recently signed up in respect of a talking tenders programme. And it's something that we will use again to make more interactive approaches and relationships with providers. Yesterday, and the timing was not set up in this way because we wouldn't choose to have two events so close together. But the event, the provided event that I referred to yesterday is another example of where we're going. There are also specific care groups, engagement events. And we're looking to develop them through the next period of time. We will furnish you with more information about talking tenders as they go forward. And also link closer and promote the use of our Supplier Development Programme and the offerings that they have. And we will also be using that to affect as well. The slide ahead of you, and it is referred to as planned procurement activity. And as far as possible, we will work to and achieve the plan. But as you will be aware, within all areas of life and within social care, there can be extraneous variables and circumstances that come in that might mean that there will be a wee shift or a change or an addition. But so the commitment about that is that we will make sure that this is updated on a regular basis as and when we can do, just to accommodate the nature of the market and the fact that it is a very fast moving environment that we operate within. So planned procurement for activity for 24-25, as is laid out, there's a particular amount of, sorry, a particular high volume of work in terms of the children's and families in section and also just across the other parts that are around. Homelessness is also an area that there's an awful lot of work in the planning. And we have successfully engaged with a sector leading representative group, Homeless Network Scotland, to support ourselves, the people who use the services, people who have previously used services and people who may in the future need services, as well as providers in the design of the work. And we do believe that that will be really instrumental in ensuring that the services, the design are fit for the future and are reflective of the current needs that are going on. We have, excuse me, listed award quarters in terms of years of where the award should be made. And as I say, if there are to be changes to that, we will seek to update with more accurate timescales. The procurement that is around, we work through Public Contracts Scotland, which is the national portal for all public sector procurement within Scotland. We use a number of prior information notices affectionately referred to as PINs and actually tell the market in terms of what is coming out, a wee bit more information and a kind of starter for ten that this is going to begin. We are hoping to use innovation notices, which allow for a wee bit more creativity, a bit more encouragement of ideas at that point as well. And that's something that we will keep up to date. And within our next iteration of the market facilitation plan, we'll also give information on what we have used and a reflection on what is used best, what we will use more of and what we will stop doing. And we'll stop for just a drink of water because I'm conscious there's a lot of talk in here. The key in social work framework for the provision of selected social support, care and support is due to expire in 2026. And there is planning work underway in terms of reviewing the existing framework. And a number of providers have been involved in that work today. We are shortly to commence a design phase. And again, that will be done on a multi-agency basis. And we, in that process, will be looking to identify how best we can make provision for these essential supports in the future. The collaborative consultation and design approach commences officially in July 2024. And that will be from start to finish, a full commitment and demonstration of air approaches is outlined within our market facilitation plan. This is us beginning to go into a wee bit technical approaches. And by the slide, it's about preparing to bid. So bearing in mind that the slides will become available, so the CPV codes are registered, et cetera. You will have them to hand and thankfully I don't have to explain what they mean and where they're at. It is critical, and I know from a number of the attendees, organisations that I've seen so far, you are already registered in Public Contracts Scotland. And there are various online tools within that portal that will help you within it. And the CPV code category codes, you can register for a number. But take whatever learning and whatever online support you can do to maximise that platform. And we would certainly be happy to facilitate a further event if it was felt that that would be helpful. We will also certainly work with our partners, we have had some discussions with GCVS in terms of how we can make this system more accessible to the providers who want to support us in our work within Glasgow. The prior information notice, innovation notice I've already mentioned, they will come up through PCS and the additional supports that you can access through the SDP who are our hosts for today and also any future talking tender events, which we're really keen to get going. So also suggest that you have an eye to the planned procurements that we've published, procurement plan that's going around. And at an early stage, I do believe that this could give you food for thought in terms of discussions with your partner providers organisations with an eye to the future. We are aware that any sort of collaboration between and across providers can take a lot of time. So that might be something to take back to your organisations about planning and to get into discussion with some providers. Similarly, we have some examples with the providers permissions we would be happy to share so that you as a provider could make direct approaches in that. The official proper start at that point then is the issuing of a contract notice. And again, you will see all of this through PCS and we can just take it forward. And the final comment from me on this is, as you do already, but make sure you read all of the documentation very, very carefully. And also use the clarification question and answers page that's coming up. So that's something that we're doing. Our next slide emphasises what I've just described in terms of the contract notice. Then sets out a number of the documents that will form the standard procurement pack, a number of which we are required and we need to make sure that we can competently and compliantly run any sort of tender work. The parts that may vary are in terms of the content of the invitation to tender. The service specification, as you would expect, will vary based on the contract and service and support that we are trying to procure. The tender, the terms and conditions, including data sharing agreements are particularly legal-esque documents in terms of the contact, content and the must dos and work for both the benefits of us as purchasers and yourself as the provider of these services. And the invitation to tender that I did mention, and that is emphasising the rules of relating to this particular tender process. It's the central document of the tender. And again, we are working updating this document within the parameters that we can do because there are legal requirements round about it. But what it does give you is it gives you the rules relating to that particular tender process. It talks about timelines, it sets out our lotting information. It confirms the selection and award criteria. So the really part within it is the critical document for yourself as providers in terms of understanding the service that we're seeking to procure. Within that as well, we're also looking at community benefits and fair work first, which are two essential aspects that we are required and also wish to ensure the maximum input to the benefit of everybody that's around. Community benefits vary in terms of what is around, what can be offered, what's been sought. And that is influenced by the value, the duration of the contract and the actual contract type. It is mandatory, but at the moment it's a pass or fail question within the tender process. Our fair work approaches again is critical to what it is that we're going forward. It's a key part of our ethical commissioning approach and also to yourselves as employers and to ourselves as commissioners and procurers of service. Again, we're doing a lot of work in terms of developing this in both in terms of the content, how we best assess it and how we then monitor that on an ongoing basis. The next part, the service specification, and this is a particularly busy slide. But for those of you who currently do business within Glasgow, you'll appreciate that it has to include the range of information that it does. We again recommend you read this fully and seek any clarifications through the established process in PCST. So the service specification is really critical because it's what it is that's being sought and a bit about how we do that. But we don't want to be too prescriptive because a lot of the ideas about how the service can be delivered and how outcomes can be best met, that's what comes from yourselves as providers, as the experts in the delivery of social care. So this is a wee bit hybrid in the minute of what we need, what you must do, but also enough that it lets you in your response to the service specification, bringing forward what's there. And the other part that I think is really important in particular to relate back to the slide in the 2019 framework, where a service has been in place or a contract has been in place for a long period of time. As you would expect, the landscape has changed in a number of ways. So you should be expecting a change specification. Hopefully you should also see in any revised new services, some of the experiences that you've had and shared with us through monitoring, through service review. And bearing in mind that the whole ethos is about improvement, ensuring that we do get the best services that we can and that they are responsive to the needs of the users and citizens of Glasgow. The next slide, which is my final slide before I pass over to Sharon, is about the financial and the cost element of the tender pack that you would be issued with. Within Glasgow, we refer to that as the Integrated Care Proposal Budget, known affectionately as the ICPB. The slide demonstrates the areas that's asked for within it. If there's finance colleagues within the participants, which I hope there are, you will be fairly familiar with it. Files, it's a standard approach that's used. The particular template shown today and used within our budgets are Glasgow specific. And there are, there is significant guidance given in the ICPB that's published within the tenders. And also again, you have the opportunity through the clarification process within PCST to ask any questions that are going on in that. And we might vary this somewhat in terms of pricing schedules where it's a framework that's involved, which is where there's more than one provider, multiple providers. And again, there'll be guidance within the ITT, so we'll be stating clearly what price and methodology we are using. However, thankfully, we have our real expert and leader in terms of all things financial. And I will use this opportunity in time just to pass over to Sharon Waring, who's our Chief Officer for Finance and Resources. Thank you very much.
Hopefully people can hear me now. Yes, yes, good. Okay, so thanks very much Gerry for that introduction. And hopefully a lot of people will know me, I'm Sharon Waring and nice to meet you all this morning. Just before I move on to the first slide, I'm going to give you a wee bit of background to what the size and scale of our budget is. So I'm conscious, I did do these slides yesterday, but I thought it would give you a wee bit more information. So the IJIB sets budget and marks us here. And the budget for the IJIB in Glasgow is quite significant, it's 1.6 billion pounds. So you know, we are bigger than some health boards or local authorities in Scotland. And we are the biggest IJIB in Scotland by a fair distance. The budget is split, we have 1.05 billion of it relates to health services and 540 million of it relates to social work services. And just to put that into context, Gerry showed you earlier on the commissioning budget, we spent 320 million on commissioned services. So as you can see, it makes up a fair chunk of our spend in relation to the social work services. So I wanted to just give you that context before I move on to my So I wanted to just give you that context before I move on to my first slide. So our financial context of our Glasgow City Health and Social Care Partnership for the next three years. As the Cabinet Secretary herself said earlier on in the year, this has been the most challenging budget setting we've had since devolution. And so it has been a significant challenge for us. And just to give you some kind of context, usually we get two percent uplift. We've had that for every year since I can remember in relation to health services. This year, we got zero percent uplift with a commitment to hopefully look at covering the cost of the pay uplift, which is still to be determined. But that is quite a significant change for us. And it meant things like prescribing pressures, where we normally expect to see that two percent uplift, we get nothing. So therefore, all the pressures that we are seeing sit with us to now look at and deal with. And we have done some work and we are projecting our cost pressures over the next three years to be a hundred and forty two million. And that includes pay inflation, particularly on the social work side, non-pay inflation, demand for demographics and complexity of need, impacts of local and national decision makings. And as I say, one of the big pressures we see, particularly on the health side, is the prescribing budget. We set with prescribing budget for all the GP services and other prescribing that's done within community services in Glasgow. So we are recognising right now, probably a bit like yourselves, that funding is not keeping pace with pressures that we are seeing in the system. And this gap of a hundred and sixteen million that we've got and that we're dealing with over the next three years, with thirty six million for twenty four, twenty five, twenty eight million, twenty five, twenty six and fifty two million in twenty six, twenty seven, to bring that back down. And that is where we are looking at our savings. And we've taken a conscious decision that the last year, twenty six, twenty seven, that fifty two million is quite a cliff edge for us and we couldn't go and deliver fifty two million of savings in one year. So what we are actually doing is looking at smoothing those savings over the next three years, including twenty four, twenty five. So that it isn't such a big savings target for us in twenty five, twenty six, by the time we get to that. So our medium term financial strategy has got four key points to it. And they are in the centre, four quadrants. So we look at service prioritisation and reduction, we look at efficiency within our programmes, we look at service reform and innovation. And we look also at managing pressures within the existing budgets that we have. And these four corners are all input from all the plans and strategies. So we've got the strategic plan for the IGIB. We've got the commissioning plan that Gerry and the team have pulled together. We've got a lot of work around change and improvement. We do a lot of work around innovation. We have got a three year strategic financial plan that has also been to the IGIB. We've got a detailed workforce plan, which has its own challenges. And like a lot of the providers out there, we are struggling to recruit to a lot of the posts that we need to fill. And we are seeing that right across health and social care. As you are also seeing, it's a real challenge to go and recruit staff at this point in time. And we do also have a reserve strategy. We are required as a one oh six public body to have reserves, which has been challenging for us at this point in time. But it's a requirement for us that we do have that in place. So moving on to the next slide, this is what twenty four, twenty five looks like. So for service prioritisation and reduction, we've got fourteen point one million of savings. For efficiency and income maximisation, we've got ten million of savings. For service reform and innovation, we have got six point one million of savings. And within managing within our existing budget, we've got fifteen point eight million of pressures that we are asking our staff to manage within the budget. So it's quite a challenge for us and it will be over the next three years. But we are, hopefully, we'll see this come to fruition and we are making good progress across these areas. But we're going to do our probable out term. First one will be end of September and that will give us a very good indication of where we're at with all four areas of our programme. Moving on to the next slide. So we are a one oh six public body, so we are akin to a local authority there, under the same legislation as us. And as such, we do have a duty as part of Local Government Scotland Act two thousand and three to provide and cover best value within our duties. So we do a lot of work with yourselves as providers to work through and deliver cost effective services which achieve best value. And we must work within the legislation using procurement processes that are open to scrutiny and deliver best value. The duty of best value in public services as follows. To secure continuous improvement in performance while maintaining an appropriate balance between quality and cost and to have regard to economy, efficiency, effectiveness, the equal opportunities requirements and to contribute to the achievement of sustainable development. So our best value characteristics are very much covered, vision and leadership, governance and accountability, the use of the resources, partnership and collaborative working, working with communities, sustainability and fairness and equity. And it is a key thing that we are measured on. And we are measured on by our auditors and we are also measured on it by Audit Scotland. And they also can conduct best value audits at appropriate times. And they do thematic audits as well as doing audits in partnerships and in local governance, as well as in health boards. So we've got quite a big framework around best value and making sure that we achieve what we have to around these duties under the two thousand and three act. So Gerry, that was to give people a flavour. One of the budgets, the size and scale of the budgets, obviously, that we have in commissioning, but also our responsibilities to set a balanced budget and to deliver on best value and make sure that we are making appropriate savings and investments that we do over the years across all our services. And I'm going to leave at that point because I know you're now going into questions. And I'm happy to pick up any of the finance questions that you might have in your question session. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you so much, Sharon. That was great. Let me just stop the recording there.